Cindy is gone tonight, so I guess I'm filling in. So be patient with me. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda, or we have two items I'd like to add. Could I hear a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And could you read item number N, I believe is what we'll put on that? Did you read that, Kara? Or Andrea? Do you want to read? Number N is Discussion with Possible Motion to Grant for Three New Radar Systems for Police Department. Okay? And O would be, well, we'll do number N first, and then O, I guess. You want to do both? Okay. Do you want to read that?
Yeah, make the motion to add N and O to the agenda for tonight.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Nay. Motion passed.
Want you to approve the agenda with the new additions. All seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And nay? Those against? Okay, passed.
Could you guys just clarify just real quick what item O is? I think we said item N. Did you read that? I'm sorry, I was speaking my.
Okay, item O is Discussion of Possible Motion for City to Forgive Water and Sewer Expenses and Pay Electricity Costs for the Chamber Visitor Center and Expand the Fall/Winter Season as a Trial from October through December. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any conflicts of interest? Anyone? Okay. The minutes? I need a motion to approve the minutes from the September 6 council meeting. We'll move to further make that motion. And that was?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Krista and Andrea, right? And all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Nay. Okay, motion carried. Bills in between?
Want you to accept.
Okay, we have a total of $1,035,052.34.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And current claims? Oh, you want to go? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay, motion passed. Okay, current claims. I need a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, $1,035,335.96.
All seconded.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor first, huh? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, nay. Okay, is there any discussion as to the bills?
On these, I've got a question on page three. On the trees that we're buying, I understand we've got some donation money for that, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, now, does the, is, are our crews putting that in, or are those volunteers?
We have it scheduled for this Thursday and Friday to be our crew putting them in. We also have Josh Larson, the community forester out of Rapid City USDA. He'll be on site both days, that's free of charge to us, and he'll offer that professional recommendations and advice as we do it, and also let the help we can.
Any others? Okay. I, the motion has been passed as well. Okay. Are there any communications from the public? Kim?
Kim Moyer, 133 North Forest Street. I don't know if you guys are aware of how many homeless individuals we have here in the community. Just, pardon? You can't hear me? There you go. I don't know if you guys are aware of how many homeless individuals we have here in the community. Having a business right downtown on Main Street, I know of probably six individuals that are roaming the streets, it's getting cold. Hot Springs has nothing to house homeless individuals, whether it be veterans coming off of the hill, doing the program, wanting to stay in a small community, or it being just people passing through the community. I've got a guy that's walked by the fitness center every single morning, no clean clothes, no place to stay, I've talked to him, there's no housing here. What can the city, or what can we do to provide a shelter for the homeless here? Rapid City has it, we don't. What can we do? Is there anything in the city's budget? I'm just bringing this to you guys because I know I'm not the only one that sees these homeless individuals. Several other members of mine have seen them. Have you seen them? Have you seen them? I mean, we've got them here. It's getting cold, we've got to do something to help these homeless people. You know, I see so many people, I drive home to a warm house. We go about our own worries and affairs. With these guys, we've got to do something to reach out to them. We got one guy urinating right downtown, I've seen it, I witnessed it, I'm not going to call him in for indecent exposure, the guy's homeless.
I guess I don't have a lot of answers for you on that, Kim, but I know the ministerial association does look into some of it, but I don't know, is there anything anybody has?
Have you guys seen a homeless person walking the street?
Well, actually, I have, but I, I, it was that person that doesn't have a coat. And my husband said, well, we should really give him a coat, and I says, I believe that he's probably from the VA, I wonder if he has one and is just not wearing it. And, but I, I don't know, maybe that person is not homeless, you know, I'm just making an assumption.
I don't know how many the law enforcement run into or deal with, or how many they're aware of that we have, but I see them every day. It, I mean, I've never seen them like this before. So, I mean, they're coming in, they're wanting a quiet town where they're not going to be bothered or harassed, but I mean, we don't even have a shelter to house anybody. I know the city, we've got a lot of property out there that I don't know if we can get a team in, or if there's any empty houses, or team up with a hotel to, they're going into their, you know, off-peak season. But, I mean, I, I see, just being on the downtown, I mean, I no longer keep my house unlocked just because I see these people rambling, you know, going up in the street. You don't know what they're going to do, you don't know if they're going to, you just don't know. But I know we just need to reach out to them. So, I'm, I'm just hoping, bringing this to your light, because I've seen them, and if other people are seeing them, we've got to do something.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Kim.
Kim?
Yep.
There's a public safety meeting on Wednesday, I'll bring it up as an agenda item, or ask it to be added to the agenda to at least start the conversation.
Okay, come on, go ahead.
Well, first, two things, one thing with that homeless thing, I will bring that up for our next congregational meeting at our church to see what the church is going to be doing about this situation.
Do you want to introduce yourself, Chris?
My name is Chris Beneland. I have come tonight to share with you guys an awesome opportunity that I have got going on with me in December. On December, on December 28th of this, this year, I have a chance to go to Rwanda, Africa, to work with orphans who have nothing, but a mission agency I'll be going with is Iceland International, and they have purchased land in Rwanda, and they've built a home for, for, for orphans who have nothing. And I'll also be working with women there who've been abused, who've been in the sex slave business. And what I'm doing is I'm bringing a five K to Hot Springs on October 8th, and we're going to start that at 9:00 AM, and then after that, there's going to be a chili-feeding cornbread at the Southern Hills Evangelical Free Church, and all those proceeds go to my mission trip to Rwanda, Africa, to make a difference in these people's lives, and also get an idea on what we can do in Hot Springs to take care of our own homeless people on the streets here in Hot Springs. And I appreciate, I know maybe as a city you guys cannot donate, but I appreciate if all you, if any of you guys would like to donate to my cause personally, that would be awesome, because I have to raise about $4,000.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, any other communications from the public? Okay, we'll go on to personnel. I don't know if there's any specific ones, if we can do all of them as one, or?
I'll make a motion, we combine A through E.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Nay. Okay, motion carried. Committee reports, I believe Carolyn isn't here, so Nolan was going to give the admin finance report for the meeting.
Sure. The admin finance committee met at their new time of 12:00 PM on September 12th. We have old business and new business to discuss. Old business, we have three items. First, we reviewed the draft policy of elected officials consulting with the attorney. This was often not to be acted on and has been back shelved indefinitely, needs to come back, we have a draft to work on at least, but for now, no actions to be taken. We had a discussion of using a local attorney, heard the proposal by Fairway McGintzbaum. This was reviewed and determined no action to be taken at this time. Input was received that if we are to solicit for new attorney services, we may get competitive citywide for all interested attorneys to be reviewed and considered. The third item was the proposal for random drug testing. We do have this in our personnel policy, so we're here to implement it. We discussed the frequency of how often. The proposal, the draft, at least, was monthly, but this was reduced down to quarterly or randomly, as my discretion or in other folks' discretion as well that serve in the C Street team. New business, we have reports from the finance officer, current financial status, we reviewed the draft of Deputy Administrator Barbieri's vacant property ordinance, 18A, and I believe she can answer questions more than the council wishes. I believe that's going to public safety next on Wednesday, we'll review further. We had a discussion of incurring city expenses prior to receiving donations, so if we have somebody verbally or even written committed to give a donation, what we should do to ensure that we receive that donation whether it be before or after that expense is incurred. That was just for discussion, no items to be done, action to be taken. We reviewed a draft investment policy prepared by Finance Officer Mr. Summers Walton, that'll be reviewed again at the next meeting and then forwarded to the council for action in the second meeting of October. There was an update on the Boulder Falls World Development Loan. We reviewed the Chamber's proposal, it's on the agenda tonight, to do a trial extension going into December, so October through December, they would operate it, see what kind of traffic comes in, and determine if it's worth keeping the depot open for extended months or even year-round possibly. And lastly, an informational item was given regarding the audit finding, which has been filed years past. In 2013, the city took out a loan of seven years. By law, we can only take out a loan of five years, and so this was an audit finding previously. It's recommended to us by DLA to make this a note on our item, our agenda tonight, and that'd be in our minutes for the next meeting, and after that, there will no longer be an audit finding. So, we acknowledge we have this loan, we don't plan to pay it off early, we'll let it sunset, and then after that, we'll take out loans for five years, no more than five years. That is all for that meeting.
Okay, thanks, Nolan. I'll give a, yes, oh, sorry.
Craig Romi, 342 North Forest Street. When I was on the council, Harley Lux and I and Bob Evans talked to Sheriff now, anybody of life-saving job, I guess you'd say, mandatory drug testing? You guys aren't doing, no way to plunge is being drug tested, are they? I would classify it as life-saving, as lifeguard, and then not being drug tested, I'd like no law.
Can you speak to that, Nolan, please?
We tabled it at that, at that meeting, we were missing a couple people, and so there wasn't anything that was final decision made.
It's a law.
Well, that's, that's actually not factual. Safety-sensitive positions is a law, which mostly applies to first responders, meaning your EMTs, your firefighters, your police department. That we do follow.
You don't think lifeguard's life-saving?
It's not, it's not my discretion, nay, it's not my call. Again, the random drug policy we're looking at implementing affects all employees equally, so there's no class selection or class bias. Again, we do follow the law, I think your interpretation may be different than what's required for us to do.
Well, that's one by what Sheriff, now Sheriff Evans told Harley himself. Maybe your police force can answer that one.
I, we gave you our best answer, sir, I'm not sure we'd be much better than that.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
Thanks, Nolan.
Okay, the airport advisor committee, there was no meeting, but I do know the plow came down with the pilot car, and tomorrow we have a CIP meeting at 1:00 to, and that's capital improvement plan with the FAA, and the next meeting for the airport will be September 29th at 8:00 in the morning. That's all I have on that. Andrea, can you, did you have a waste management?
We did, we had one last Thursday, I forgot my notes, so if I could report next time, that would be great. I do know we bought a new cat machine, so I can tell you all about that in two weeks, how's that?
Okay, thanks, Andrea. Downtown, the street participation, Carolyn and Ann isn't here, not think they had any meeting either. Do you know the date for the next?
They will meet on the 5th, I believe, of October.
Okay.
At 5:00 PM library.
Okay, thanks. Evans Plunge, Kara, did you have a meeting?
Yep. We had a meeting on Thursday, September 15th, and we heard from Mary Galley, she presented a sample plan proposing Evans Plunge Mineral Springs work with local motels and restaurants to give some type of overnight package during the peak season through Black Hill Central reservations, and they discussed, she discussed the Chamber's involvement with the lodging room taxes, the bid board, and the overnight advantage discount that we're currently doing. We discussed, and Barbara Walter gave an update on the Friends of Evans Plunge. We also went over the 2017 plunge events and promotions. Nolan has a schedule already put together for us for 2017, and the closure this year will be January 23rd through February 6th. We discussed the projects that we're going to be doing during the proposal, we're discussing the ADA ramp, and also the roof inside the pool area, and some Tuesday volunteer maintenance items that will be ongoing after our closure date for the winter, we're still closing the Tuesday in October, that starts. Boden shared some concerns about the discharge pipe, and also shared a bit of history of the hormone chlorination system, and we had a book sign review, it was brought to our attention at the last city council meeting, we discussed it at the Evans Plunge meeting, and that whole topic is going to be on the agenda at this Wednesday's public safety meeting, for the potential move of the safety issue with the plunge, book signed is for our location. Short update, the pump system was provided, and the next meeting will be Monday, will be Thursday at 7:00 PM November 17th.
Okay, thanks, Kara. Okay, any questions, anybody? Okay, the next one is Park and Rec, U purification culture development, Krista.
Well, we didn't have a meeting, but.
Could I put your mic up to your, sorry.
We didn't have a meeting, but did talk to Nolan about some of the things that are going on at Parks and Recs, just to give an update for everybody. The bathroom construction will be, at Brookside will be resumed in October, the toilet and the sink are ordered, right now, the crews are busy with asphalt this weekend, with the dump week, so kind of got it a little hold for a little bit. Grant for a extension of Freedom Trail has been applied for, voting starts next week. Tree planting set for Thursday for Centennial and perhaps Butler, depending on the rain or Thursday and Friday. Josh Larson will be on hand for the planting and for supervision there, and how more deferred maintenance being addressed right now, such as painting, butter park benches, and soon we'll be fixing some fences. Trees this week were trimmed, as well in Butler, and dead tree removal. Twelve trees will be planted in Centennial, Aiden, Butler. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, good, thanks, Krista. Planning and zoning, Kim, would you be able to?
Yeah, we didn't have a, we didn't have a meeting last month, and we're not going to have a meeting this month, but I did want to make sure everybody knew that in October, we've gotten enough information already that we're going to have three public hearings, two for right-of-way abandonment, and one for variance application.
Kind of what days your?
It would be the, it's the same day as, as this month, so it'd be the 20th.
That's Wednesday?
Yeah.
It's 19.
It's 19?
I have a calendar here, it's easy.
Oh, good, thank you, I was trying to remember, at my age, you just don't remember.
At 7, is that when you?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And Tim, public safety?
Since there's going to be so much on the agenda, I've decided to cancel it.
For not being there.
No, the public safety meeting will be Wednesday at 2:00.
Great, thanks. And public works?
We did have a public works meeting on the 13th. We discussed, so main sewer mainline extension in the alley behind State Farm, we're going to get some more information on just how we, we pay for all this, and how that's being done or been done. Wood chipping, we, that will be discussed further on in the agenda. Went over some new streetlight costs for the 2023 construction of the city, and we're kind of looking at some different kind of lighting and, and stuff like that that we could, you know, put in at that time. There's some hail damage to the Evans Pump Station and the Evans Plunge, we're looking in to get that taken care of, there is insurance to cover that. We've also discussed the engineering design contract of Bros Engineering, that will be discussed later on in the agenda. Project updates, the loading dock for old practical purposes, as far as I know, after the boys put in their asphalt today, it should be ready to open. So, I'm hoping that'll be done, and we have started working on a few of them, like Garden Street, and a few other places around town that need some, some paving done, so, other than that, that was it.
Okay, good, thanks, Tim. Andrea, volunteer fire department?
Skyler.
Oh, I missed you, didn't I, Skyler, sorry. Skyler Golf Course.
Our next meeting is going to be Monday, September 26th at 5:15 at the Coles House.
Okay, and then Andrea?
We had our meeting Tuesday at 7:00, it's always the first Tuesday in the month. They had 15 dispatches, they talked about gas cards being in every truck for filling, and a couple places in the shop for easy access. There was discuss about revising the fire ordinance here in the future. Fire prevention weeks coming up here in a couple weeks. On October 10th, they will have four guides at the school, and then also they'll be going over to Bethesda School for that. On October 13th, will be an open house at the fire department from 6:00 to 8:00. Pictures from the 125th celebration were presented and available for anyone to look at. They discussed the bunker gear, talked about getting fitted, and then we'll get that ordered here this fall. There was discussion about moving the gym from the old building, which is upstairs, possibly moving it downstairs for the floor, because of the floor, and maybe buying a set of dumbbells as well, for those gentlemen to use that. There were a couple dispatches which included Lifelike, and there was discussion about who calls, who calls them in, and then if they aren't needed, who pays for that. They're going to set up a visit from the people at Lifelike who actually bring in the helicopters and have kind of a first responder meeting to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page, so we don't incur some costs for those other people possibly. And then discussion of fixing some of the drainage in the old building as well for the floors, and that's it.
Okay, thanks. Okay. I need a motion for the second reading of ordinance 1167-217. This is our appropriation ordinance, and I need a roll call vote to be taken afterwards, so Ms. Deef, we could do that afterwards. It's a South Dakota qualified law, we have to have our funding and our tax levies will be due the first day of October, so we have to have this done, right?
Right.
Okay, so can I have a motion for the second reading of the ordinance? Who's out, Krista?
Krista.
Okay, and? Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Skyler. Okay, all in favor by roll call vote, please?
Karen Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skyler Wetzel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Then, then we'll move on to, oh, is there any discussion, I guess, do you have a discussion?
I want to clarify why I voted no on this, so everybody knows. It's my personal opinion that this budget is what I would classify as a bookkeeper's budget, that it does not exactly reflect the total, what our departments need to keep the city running. It is a, it's a balanced budget, which is what everybody's after, but that's my personal feeling on it, and that's why I voted no.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Okay, I, the next item on the agenda is for the resolution, 2016-13, resolution to support the city of Hot Springs for the TAP grant application, and Kim, would you be able to talk about that a little bit, please?
Sure. Couple months ago, I had come to you with a presentation about LID, Low Impact Design Development, and some of our ideas for going for this grant.
Step back and do a poll, do you have a point of information to ask?
Oh, yes. Point of information, Frankie.
Now, it's not discussionable, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kara.
Sorry to cut you off.
Okay, well, the basic thing is that we went ahead and we got our engineering study done, we had our interview team, we spent a couple hours with them, it was beautiful, it was on a 98-degree day, and we kept putting them out in the sun, saying, we need shade, yeah, we need, we need to have something here that makes our sidewalks more hospitable to our own pedestrians and to visitors, and especially to the people who have difficulty making their way through a sidewalk and use it as their primary means of transportation, whether that's in a wheelchair, or scooter, walker, cane, whatever we have here. This is the next step. We got invited then to do a full application, we're in the process of doing that, it's due at the end of this month on the 28th. I've got everything ready to go for that, we need. We need to have a resolution in order to apply for it. Since our last time that we talked, the focus has gotten more funneled down. This particular application is taking those LID ideas that we had for reusing storm water, but using them as, as looking at a full intersection and improvement area. So, we use porous pavers, rain gardens, and crosswalks that are all set up to help out visually and tactically to highlight our intersections, so they become safer places for people to meet pedestrian versus vehicular transportation going on. So, that's all that this is about. If we're able to get this, we're applying for the maximum amount, and we're a pretty stiff competition. There's over 11 other communities that are applying for this money, so we're just hoping that we get as much as we can.
Okay. Thanks, Kim. So, basically, the resolution is to support the City of Hot Springs for the TAP grant application. So, and I think you talked to us about it once before, so it's not new, but it's the storm water discharge issue. So, if I can have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Andrea and Kara? Okay. And kind of all in favors?
Can we discuss first?
Yeah. You can discuss. Discussion?
Kim, you mentioned maximum amount. What's the maximum amount?
Well, we're asking for $400,000. And understand that whatever we get here is augmenting the 385 reconstruction project. If without this, we're paying for it at 100% cost, or we don't get it.
So, the city has a 20% tax?
Correct.
Okay, or total cost?
Yep.
Okay.
It says minimum 20%. Is there a likelihood it'll be larger than 20%?
No, I would assume 20%.
So, voting for the resolution doesn't obligate the city to anything beyond the application for the money?
My understanding is that's correct, and the likelihood of us getting the full amount that we're asking for with the really intense competition, I think, is very unlikely. But whatever we can get, once we know what we're going to be receiving as far as this grant, I have the folks at the Black Hills Council of Elected Officials, they're looking at other grant options, so that we can keep augmenting and augmenting this 385 project to get it to look the way we need it to look.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, okay, let's go ahead, and all in favors say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Okay, motion carried. Okay, under new business discussion, possible motion to set public hearing on October 17th at 7:10 PM for the Boys and Girls Club for the Wine and Reef Fundraiser on, okay, the hearing's on October 17th, and the fundraiser's November 12th at the Mueller Center.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. Okay. Kara, is that right? And Bob?
Actually, Andrea.
It was Andrea, sorry. And Krista, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carried, discussion. I'm sorry? Did it backwards? Okay. All right. Let's go on to the next one. Discussion, impossible motion to approve travel request by Police Officer Schaefer for the instructor, instructor development training in Pierre on October 16th through October 21st. And Josh Dobroff?
Second.
Andrea and Krista, again, right? Discussion. Okay.
As an instructor then, will he be able to instruct for other law enforcement agencies?
That's my understanding of it, yes. Info is in the packet that makes him able to provide training now to his peers in certain aspects, not full training, but in certain aspects, he can provide training now.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Okay.
After he receives a certification, is he automatically, does he automatically qualify for bump in pay?
No, there is no attached compensation for certification.
All in favor then, aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to appoint Minor Patel to the Bid Improvement Board to replace vacated seat of Shaheil Shadrhaai for the remainder of the two-year term. Can I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Kara and Bob, thank you. And discussion, anyone? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And nay. Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion for former Police Officer Majeski to repay City of Hot Springs per South Dakota Basics Officer Certification Policy.
I'll make that motion.
Andrea?
Second.
And Tim? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to approve contract change order for 2015 Albany Avenue Water Main Replacement.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, Tim and Andrea, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion for city administrator to sign the Bros Preliminary Engineering Agreement for Jennings Avenue Bridge Replacement. Can I hear a motion?
I'll motion that.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Public Works talked about this, so just for information, it goes across to the fire department, right?
Basically, what this is, is we're, we're hiring Bros Engineering to do the preliminary stuff on our bridges, on a bridge down here by the fire hall. And this is all part of engineering that needs to be done, whether we do the bridge on our own money, or if we decide to go out and try and get grant money to help us repair this bridge. And this study that they're doing is not just a one-time thing. We can use it over and over and over, the way I understand it. So, we're not putting out a bunch of money that if in six years, we decide we're going to do the bridge, we've already got the engineering part of it done. That's the reason for this.
Okay. And basically, it's the grant application for the 2017 BIG IG grant offered by the DOT. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Discussion, possible motion to hire Escalante Tree Services to chip city slash pilot maintenance shop. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Bob?
I'll second.
And Kara? Okay. And discussion?
We, you want, you want me to do it?
Sure, you do it.
We actually went out for bids for this, and we had two bids, and as it was, the guy that was actually the low bidder is not prepared at this time to do it, so we gave it to the next guy up. There's only a few, I mean, a few hundred dollars or less that, that came. One was 16,260, and the other one was... I guess I have the other one here. Anyway, what we have here, folks, is we have a small problem out here at the dump station. We gather up brush all year long, and we have no, we don't have a chipper of our own. We could probably buy one, but there you're talking excess, a lot of money to get a chipper that'd handle this sort of brush. And we can't burn it because of the airflow, the way the airflow is through that canyon. If it's not a plum still day, we tend, the people down at the hospital get upset because their air exchangers are sucking our smoke into their hospital. So, as a result of that, and problems we have with the hotel, and now with the new housing out there, we're just about down to where we have to chip it. We cannot burn it anymore like we used to. So, that's the reason we're doing this. The last time we had it chipped was right after that last big storm we had, and FEMA picked up the cost, and it was over $25,000. So, I think we're getting a little better deal. So, that's what this is all about.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Yeah, it's a service that we offer to the city residents to drop off their slash, so it's expensive.
Wes Greggs? Is, is my understanding, are you going to offer these chips to the state home when you're done?
Their, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but their eating system will not, the chips that they burn have to go through a treatment process. They can't just burn chips, I guess. We, we did discuss this with them, so we talked to them about it, and evidently, they have to add something to the chips before they can go through these eco burners, and by just chipping it, we're not doing that.
I just can't believe that they wouldn't be interested in the pile if alls they got to do is pay for the chipping, because the trucking would be so much cheaper from here than where they're doing it now.
Right, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is they can't use them.
But if they paid to do the treatment, I mean, that's good.
The slash that we take in is such a diverse mix of species.
I know what it is.
It doesn't meet their grade.
And legally, we can burn it, Tim. I do know that, that's factual. We can burn it. So, I mean, that $16,000 you're playing with, I mean, that's, but it's a...
To go back to your first statement or question, we cannot sell or give away these chips to the state veterans home. We also try to shatter to either sell or even give away through our large back pile of wood chips when it's done, regarding the burning. It's out of consideration for the neighbors. We do not burn. It's about a three-day process to do so.
I know how long this, Nolan, I was in the process several times. What you're not thinking about is what you chip them, you have to do something with those chips. We moved that pile several times, at what cost?
We have also considered that as well, and so a third option we had considered was biochar, where a contractor comes in, has a cell-contained operation where they burn them internally, turn it into a charcoal to be used as an organic fertilizer. That was our preferred choice, however, that contractor wasn't able to get his biochar machine available to use in time for this. He's still at least six months' lead time on his machine. So, we're looking at this from all different angles, and that was our best angle, but then the lead doesn't up, and he didn't have access to his machine like he thought he would. So, we understand we have these chips.
Well, I just want to realize, your $16,000 isn't the final, that's not the total figure, so...
So, to circle around, the ideal scenario is these machines become available to us, where they can come and chip our, or to convert our chips to biochar, we can sell products to them and have them removed out of our premises. But we don't have that timeline set up to have them do this here, in October, November, December, most likely be a spring, summer of '17 opposed to '16.
One thing you might look at, instead of hauling them out here to the landfill, take them up to the airport, put them down below in the pit, then you could burn them. Then it wouldn't bother anyone. Then you wouldn't have the cost every 20 years associated with it.
We're still going to chip it.
No, not if, if you put them in a pile at the airport down below, you could burn them out there.
I propose the city move the pile out there themselves, so we have the public take their pile.
Exactly. When you're, when you allow them to take their debris, let them take it out there.
That's an interesting idea.
Well, it's a lot cheaper.
Okay. Thanks, Wes.
I just wanted to chime in on this. We had talked in our department head meeting, coming up, we're going to be looking at the Boulder Falls road construction. One of the things that I proposed back in the east was the use of wood chips as sedimentation and road control. We're going to have a number of miles of roads that we're going to be using, constructing, and using our wood chips as small construction dams, stabilizing temporary hillsides, stuff like that. We'll use quite a few tonnage of this type of wood chips that we can use and then just scatter, and it degrades back into the woods after you're done. It's a really good way to do our sedimentation road control. It will help cut down the cost of the road construction, so that if we're supplying that material, our contractors will not have to purchase special, specialized logs or sedimentation road control for that project.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. Do I have a motion, or can I have a vote to accept the Escalante Tree Services to chip our slash pile? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item H, discussion, possible motion to hire Jeremy Herbert, Police Department, full-time hourly position at 1784 per hour. This is 91% at the top of grade scale, effective 9/27/16, contingent on completing reciprocity certification, and signed agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Kara, and second?
That was Andrea. I'm sorry, who was it?
Andrea. Andrea, I'm sorry, Andrea. Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks, Kara. Okay. Discussion.
Nolan, we had talked about getting Jeremy to sign an agreement prior to his being hired, that if for any reason he doesn't become certified, then the city's reimbursed the additional cost. Did he agree to do that? Were you able to talk with him about doing that?
Mike did talk with Jeremy about that idea. Jeremy was receptive to it. He said he would sign anything, he'd be happy to do so. He's looking to make Hot Springs his home for the foreseeable future, to make Hot Springs his permanent home, sorry.
Okay, so in the same sense that law enforcement signs that agreement, that if they leave the police department, they reimburse, this would be the same thing?
There's, there's two options. You have the two-year, but given he already has ability to be reciprocity, be certified, that'd be one option, so we'd have to say two years after he gets his official certification. However, both will invest in it a lot less than what we do at, at basically, as an officer, civilian, but we're looking to make an officer. So, the one option is it's two years after he signs that. The other option is two, if he separates between now and becomes certified, that he can repay back the difference between being a certified and a non-certified officer for those months. There's kind of two options you can bring the council to the decision.
Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting that he sign that other form, but in the same sense that he's obligated to the city then, that if he doesn't meet his certification, he's reimbursed the city for the certified cost.
Yeah, so for the difference that he's not certified, we can pay back that difference if he departs from the city and the council ceases repayment. We can certainly have him sign that agreement, no doubt.
Okay. Thanks, Bob and Nolan.
Bob, do you move to substitute the motion to have him sign an agreement? Is that what you'd like to do?
If I can do that, just, I'd like it in writing before we offer him the position, and he's willing to do that.
So, a substitute motion?
I could change my motion to include an agreement if he doesn't pass to repay.
Nowhere. So, we have a substitute motion from Andrea. One, and a second, just to clarify.
Andrea, a second.
Yeah.
Re-seconded.
So, then, we compensate him out of what's on the agenda, but also have him sign a written agreement, say that he separates with the city before he becomes certified, do repay then the difference between a non-certified and the pay we offered him in this agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion, impossible motion to authorize Council President Georgia Holmes and City Attorney to sign the FAA grant offer for the Airport Improvement Program, AIP, project number 3-46-0020-012-2016, construct north half parallel taxiway. And this is a time-sensitive issue, so that if it needs to be done... And this is a time-sensitive issue, so that it needs to be done tonight, am I right?
You are right.
Okay. Okay, Krista, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks Andrea. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All abstained? Okay, that carried. Discussion and possible motion to approve automatic budget supplement of $1,053.53 to Mueller Center for the building repairs, 101-45600-42520, which is due to revenue deceived from insurance claim for water damage. This was a lead that we had in our irrigation system, right? Okay, and we were reimbursed by the insurance company? And I need a motion for us to reimburse that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bob?
I'll second.
And Krista? Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, item K, request to begin legal action against 945 North 24th Street, owner John Flight for non-compliance with zoning and nuisance ordinance. Kim, point of... Okay, Kim, would you do that for us, please?
This particular violation was given to me whenever I first started working here. I was able to work out a cleanup agreement with John. We did really well in the first six months. He had a death in the family and it's kind of off-railed him. He's getting back to it, but a little bit late. I did stop by John's house today and took the pictures that I supplemented with on your table today. He's moving forward, but still not completed as per our discussions. You can, if you look at the pictures and you have any questions, I can answer those for you. Apparently, he's planning on having the shed moved out by the end of this week. The gentleman who was gonna help him with the crane, his crane broke, so now they're moving it by hand.
Didn't this start even long before you were here?
Yes. The particular actual violation that was issued by Scott Seminar was issued in 2013. Prior to that, we have violations that have stemmed on this property since 1998.
Okay. You mentioned they had discussion with him. Did you guys sign some sort of agreement that said, yes, I will do X amount by six months, or?
Yeah, we had an agreement that was supposed to have been completed in June of last year. We ended up working with him through a number of different scenarios, truly trying to move him forward. He was looking to build a garage that would house a lot of his violations. He was trying to do a land swap with John Eng, that ended up falling through this past June. So we then said, okay, now we know where we stand, let's move things forward. I think the neighbors have been really patient with the additional year on top of that. But we've, we've worked really hard. I think John's, he's been gentlemanly the whole way. He's tried his best, he just hasn't made it completely. But I'll let you look at pictures, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Okay, basically, he's a neighbor, so complaints came also because neighbors, neighbor, our neighbor, we want to keep him up. Okay, so this is a request for, to begin legal action.
I make a motion, and we continue with this?
My second.
Thank you, Tim and Andrea. And discussion, anyone? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Could I just have one bit of clarification? We had received some legal information today about what our clean and lean actually allows us to do. We can go ahead and do a clean and lean on this, or we could take it to court, which is what I initially asked for. I just need to have clarification on what you'd like me to do.
Oh, okay.
Or legal counsel say?
Question back to you then, Cam, which do you think would be the easiest to enforce?
Well, the quickest way would be to do the clean and lean. I'd have to work with the police department on that, because we'd need to obtain a title as per an abandoned car for any of the vehicles that we remove from there. A legal way is obviously more costly and time-consuming.
The motion that was adopted, as I understood, was the legal way?
So, but both, both ways are legal, I mean, if we go through...
Yeah, both ways are legal, so...
We go through the clean and lean, or if we go through the, you know, we go in and take it over and do whatever. I guess, I know it's been going on for a long time, and I'm sorry, Matt, back there.
Yeah, it's 1987.
Right, but I guess the, the clean and lean would probably be the fastest, would it not?
Yes, it would.
I would suggest that we go that way. I will amend my motion to do it with the clean and lean rather than through the court system.
So we see what was adopted, amend the motion.
Amend the motion that we continue legal action as far as the clean and lean is concerned?
Okay.
And we'll go that way.
Okay.
I'll resecond it.
Okay, thank you, Tim and Andrea. Any other discussion?
I'm just gonna do the claim.
What I end up doing is I go through a normal procurement policy, and I will get three quotes, and I will take the best bidder that would help us move this out. It would be a joint proposition probably between a hauler that would do vehicle relocation, probably a landfill or like Ace type of a metal recycler, and also somebody that can help me out with organizing and cleaning up the actual property.
Now, it's contracted services, not city crew?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion has been amended to use the clean and lean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed?
I'll just add one other caveat. Typically, how these run... No, I'm sorry, this is actually a good thing, I think Bob would be interested. Whenever we do a clean and lean like this, let's say we get some money back from our auto recycler, that goes and it takes off of the amount of money that we lean onto the property. So it, we do, we do balance everything out.
Good. Okay. Yeah, thanks so much. Appreciate you being here. Okay, the motion carried with the amended motion for a clean and lean, okay? Then our next item is L, which is to request for another clean and lean action against 602 South 4th Street, executives Ramona Hawkins for non-compliance with zoning and nuisance ordinance. Do you want to give a point of information on that also?
Sure, spoke with Ms. Hawkins today, and when they realized that they were gonna be on the agenda tonight, they did a full war push. Everything got mowed, dead limbs cut. A lot of things was, were removed, but they weren't able to get everything removed. There are some things that are still there as far as debris, significantly less than what was there before. The pictures tell the tale.
Okay, do I have a motion to start the perform, to perform the clean and lean on this property?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Andrea, and a second?
I'll second.
Bob, thank you. On discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? All against? Motion carried. Okay, point of information for item M, city non-compliance with debt issue issuance for South Dakota Codeified Law 92515, Bank of West promissory note issued in 2013, and I believe Nolan gave some update on that already from the admin meeting. Can you just expound a little bit on that, or Misty, do you want to do it?
Yeah, I will. Those of you that were here for our audit reading, remember the audit finding that we had about this loan to allow us to no longer have the audit finding. They'll continue to have this reference in the management letter as long as the loan exists. It was recommended that we note in our minutes that we've considered the matter. At this point, it wouldn't, it would cost the taxpayers more money to refinance this note that is now under five years. The rate would be higher, and we'd have costs incurred to refinance it, so it does not make good business sense to refinance it at this point. So if we can acknowledge that we understand that, and that we'll going forward have our attorney review all loans that we take out, then that can move that from an audit finding to just a reference in our management letter.
We are learning, Misty, thank you.
We are.
Does anybody have any question about that? Okay, I guess we don't have to make a motion or anything on that. We'll go on to our next agenda item. Where do I put it? Oh, there it is, thanks. We had added agenda item number N, or letter N, discussion possible motion to accept grant for three new radar systems for the police department, and our cost is 20%, or $1,267.74 for the total cost of the three radars. I'd like to...
Make a motion, we accept.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you, and any discussion on that?
Nolan, do you know how old the systems are that are being replaced?
I don't have the exact models or years of what's being replaced. I do know the last two budget seasons though, Chief Close has brought up radars as being something we'd like to see updated, and in fact, both budgets, or the first budget in 2015, he had money in his initial budget to do this. That wasn't approved, sorry, he had money, he would like to see spent on this, but through budget cuts, creating a balanced budget that was reduced. He did not include that in the '16 budget, given he understood his priorities and limited funds. But I guess, long story short, I don't have the exact years at the same time. At the same time, this is something that is a priority of his that we would like to purchase in the near future. Having grant funds covering 80% of it is ideal for us financially.
Okay, so does it go in three, the new car, right, and two others? You're familiar with what it is or not? The radar systems go in the new car and two other, replace two others, okay?
I understand, but one of, there's a police officer back there, probably knows just where they're going.
The newest car, one that Chief Close is driving now, and then one of the other, the rank of...
Is it establishing new equipment in the vehicles? At least the new one it is.
Yes, the new one.
And Chief Close, does he have one? Is it replacing used equipment, or is it new?
Replacing all used stuff. And for the new squad car, there was nothing in it to begin with.
Yeah, I'd say, similar to, I understood it as, it'd be the 2017 truck, we'd purchase the new year, so it'd be new equipment. Chief Close's, which is not, we're replacing old equipment with that one, and then also the new black vehicle out down at the police station, it'd be adding to that one new equipment. So regardless, it's offering three new systems to a well-needed or high-need department.
Okay, Captain Wyman applied for the grant, so thanks. Okay, do I hear a motion to, oh, did you, you be... Okay, we have some else?
Are we still in discussion?
Yes.
I guess I'd like a clarification on that. My understanding of the response from Chief Close is that one of these is not going in the new vehicle, the new vehicle is coming with a radar. It's not gonna change my vote. I just like a clarification so that the council knows where they're going. It's my understanding they're going in three old vehicles.
So tomorrow, we'll send out the updates to exactly which vehicle we get it is, that way it's clear for everybody here tonight.
Okay.
You're gonna see them in use, that's what we can guarantee right now, tonight.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? Nay, okay, motion carried. Okay, item zero, or our next one, discussion and possible motion by the city to forgive water sewer expenses and pay electric costs for Chamber Visitor Center expanded for the fall and winter season trial, October through December. And I believe the city requested the Chamber to look into this, and so this was a kind of an agreement that came about.
I make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Andrea.
I'll second.
Okay, Kara, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I do have a comment here. Trying to remember which meeting we were at, I think it was Admin Finance. We were looking at the cost per month, and the figure I remember is $260 a month for the three months. It's about what would be the cost of the city.
The variable is the variable, so if it's, electrical is like October, we don't anticipate October being a high electrical use month, given you've got good temperatures, a little warm, the balance. But the budget breakdown is the $160 is a semi-conservative electrical cost, and on that, we have the water sewer expenses, and then just between 45 and 60. And then our staff time is then trash cans to do the maintenance we already do for the next year of default.
Other than we'd be looking at a maximum of $260 a month? Is that fair to say?
Barring, barring other blizzing, yes, that'd be...
Thank you.
I'd like to add, we do keep the electricity on there year-round anyway, so we do have an electrical bill there even when they're not there because of our, the heat system that's in there, and our great plumbing that's in there. We do keep it warm all winter long, so we already do have somewhat of an electrical cost.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I think that has our agenda. Finance Officer report, do you have something for us, Misty?
Sure. Thank you for approving the second reading of the appropriate ordinance required by law. Appreciate it, all the hard work that we all put into it. We'll have that published, provided the 20 days, and get our tax levy certified to the county. I also wanted to thank the council for approving my travel to attend the South Dakota Retirement System Authorized Agent Training in Spearfish last Thursday. It was just a couple-hour training, but being the second time I went, I learned even more things than the first. I appreciate you letting me go and take advantage of that. And did add the city as a participant in the SDRS Roth 457 Plan option, which is now available to any employee participating in the South Dakota Retirement System. That's at no cost to the city, it just allows our employees an additional investment avenue for retirement. I wanted to provide an audit report update. Donna Danker and Associates are finished with our 2015 audit. They're currently waiting for the city's component unit, which is the Housing and Redevelopment Commission, to complete their audit, so the component unit numbers can be inserted into ours. At last check, they, the South Dakota Housing and Redevelopment Commission, were working towards a September 30th deadline for their completion. So we can expect ours, if they hit that deadline, to be delivered in late October, early November. And then we'll be ready for the next year.
Okay, thanks, Misty. Nolan?
Just a reminder to the council, also to the public, we do have our free dump week next week. It's Monday through Friday. It's the last one of the 2016 year, so it's a good chance to get things tidied up before the weather gets cold and snow starts flying. I today followed up with the facade grant recipients, reminding them that the deadline to have the updates made is October 15th, informing them if they cannot make this deadline, to make me aware of it as soon as possible for them, that way we can set up a certain timeline if need be. It's encouraging to see, I know at the corner of university, they were measuring on the overhangs there, so I can see that work's getting done, and also if you look at Red Rock, there's activity on that as well, which is encouraging. This Saturday, we have the Climb Hot Springs event, and so when that comes, increased pedestrian traffic. Be mindful of that when you're downtown, if you're driving, there's gonna be some few crossings. There'll be the Legion Riders, thanks to them helping facilitate some of the crossings there along River Street, but also it gives us a chance to bring 50-plus contestants or participants in to do a new event that features our newly refurbished... or participants in to do a new event that features our newly refurbished staircases around town. So, that'll be a new event happening this Saturday, followed up by King of the Rings and a cannonball competition at Evans Plunge. Mike Close, just text me, or Chief Close, just text me. The Taurus is going to get updated for radar for sure, and then the other month, I'll give you updates tomorrow after I get those, the information from him. But the Taurus existing vehicle will be updated immediately.
Can I ask you, those yellow arrows, is that in participation of this?
Yes, so the yellow, blue arrows you see around town, we're not whipping up the streets quite yet downtown. That's just for the race. That is a chalk-style spray paint, so they will be on there for about one to three months, I was told this morning. We can take a power washer, wash them off, what we like to do, so we'll get them off quicker. Also, if you take that shovel off, the snow starts flying, and some salt, which will come off, and do time for that as well. So, they're prepping up for the race, certainly for that. If you've been downtown, you'll notice that there's barricades up on Garden Street. We're doing asphalt projects this week, and partially last week, too. For the public, we anticipate Garden Street to be opened up by Wednesday. They're doing some extensive pothole patching, as well as repairing some of where we did the new water line installation here. That's how it runs together last year, that was done.
Hey, Nolan?
Yes?
Speaking of Climb Hot Springs, tomorrow, at like 5:45 in the morning, KOTA is coming down here from Rapid City to do a video on the training of the Climb Hot Springs event, and that's tomorrow morning.
Yep, so she has to hear Chris tomorrow morning, 5:45. KOTA will be in town interviewing Kurt Laub with Climb Hot Springs, and I think I'm lucky enough to be on TV at 5:45, too. So, anybody interested in the event or getting out for a morning workout, KOTA will be there, filming people preparing for the event this weekend. Honestly, it's really encouraging to see these fitness-minded events, almost 12 months out of the year now, all outdoors, which is neat to see us return to our roots of being a health and wellness community. With that, I'll turn it over to council president.
Okay, mayor report is, she's, I think she's enjoying some time. I don't think there's anything else, is, can I hear a motion for Jeremy?
I'll still do it.
Second.
It's all in favor?
Aye.
No discussion?